Okay, we call the meeting order. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty uh October ninth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the board of selectmen. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Uh, communications, I'm gonna start with um the cell tower, right? Several communications with that. Um. You know, this. This is, I've been thinking about this a lot, and you know, one of my single biggest concerns to not get involved was the role our emergency services played, and I think I stated that I spoke with all the chiefs, the police, uh, the executive director of Litchfield County Dispatch. Um, they all felt that that would be a help to coverage in that area. The thing I'm grappling with is, you know, and I'm in the fire department, you're in the fire department, we we've seen over the years, what I've seen anyway was cell coverage, not radio coverage. You know what I mean? Not a gap in radio coverage for the emergency services. With all that considered, and then looking into you know, I know what the sighting council will and will not consider, and you know, for example, I spoke with land use and land use said, we've got nothing, where they have complete autonomy relative to that. So with that said, I would like to make the motion that the town apply for intervenor status on behalf of the residents to not have this book there. So, any thoughts?
What's it mean?
Well, it it, when you have that status, it basically means that you can give verbal testimony at the hearing as well as written. And and I think for the town to have that label that the town of Washington is not in favor of this, I think there's alternatives potentially um that maybe hasn't been researched. I I I can almost be certain that the the cell tower company picked this of twenty seven sites because it's the most advantageous, whether economically, geographically, it's it's the simplest. Um, and their job, they don't have a regard for where it goes necessarily, you know? Um, but I think an alternative can be found somewhere else. We'll craft testimony, we can work with the residents, you know, the the how we want to do this, but I think it's important. Uh, this one really kept me up nights because of the emergency services, but I think it's important that we get involved in this.
I I. Uh, I do think that the cell towers just first, first is doing that on their list at all, is the number of customers that they can sign up. Love to do that.
No, and they didn't bring it up. I mean, we we did that due diligence. Um, I I agree, Dean, it's 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 a very murky thing to get through to find out what's
Right.
Yeah, um, so, Jay, and.
Well, I guess I I I have the same thing. Whether they put it there for their that's what you live nearby or not, it does provide us with a area that we don't have coverage. I really think that's important for the town, and I think it's important for the people who live in that area to have that kind of coverage, and so I'm also torn about it. I understand, and I have a group of people who have a real concern. I can see a cell tower over the hill from where I am. I I don't have a problem with that. I understand some people do. But um, you know, as far as the town's role in I I guess if if we can present nobody has at least that I've seen here, present any alternatives. If there are alternatives, I I think that's what I would like to say, the sighting council. I I'm not in disagreement of putting a tower over there somewhere, I have to say. I I I just think it's the right thing for for emergency issues, but if if part of our argument is what other sites are available that would be more appropriate in terms of people's concerns about seeing the tower, then I'm willing to do, I'm I'm okay with doing that, I guess.
If I may just ask a question or add to that. I think maybe you and I are both a little ambivalent about whether there's a tower there or not. What I'm not ambivalent to is people's desire not to have it, not having a good choice, not ambivalent to that at all. Why people don't have more of saying this, when it's in their backyard, that bothers the nonsense out.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the thing, if we can intervene on their behalf, we at least have it much more open to our process. And now with the sighting council, that may well be not be possible. It may be taken out of our heads completely.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Dean, but you know, and I also realize that this comes from the federal level, so this is pushed by the FCC, it was years ago. They set the mandate of, you've gotta, it it expand telecommunications. I don't think that helped because it didn't force improving technology. It just said, put these hundred and forty foot towers wherever you need them.
The reason the sighting council came around was because
Oh. Thank you.
The reason the sighting council came around is because every time back thirty years, whenever the towers first started going up, every community said, yeah, they're great, but don't put mine here. And so none of them ever got through, and so they made the law that said, sorry, folks, we're that's wrong, right? But that's how it came about, but it's exciting. We're never getting anywhere else.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I guess it's to.
I I just think it lends weight if it comes from the town.
Oh, of course.
Um, and I can do a little research to see where we were fifteen years ago when this thing was yanked. It and I would hope other organizations, Brian's here, uh, might do the same, uh, apply for intervenor status. I mean, the more groups or organizations, I think it's it's gonna carry more with the sighting council.
Well, I guess I go back to find the clear from my my perspective. If we're gonna be interveners, that's because we don't think that's the best site. I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with us being uh any intervenor status to say, we don't want a tower anymore. I I think that's, I'm not, I don't support that.
No, no, I agree.
So I'm happy to support the argument that you could find a better, or at least they need to show how they, you know, better research as to where other sites might be. They might not agree with us anyway if we find it, if we can identify a better site, but I'm not I I'm not against them putting a tower up somewhere where it means people are gonna be safer, and that's why I feel that.
I understood. I I just think we can provide that in our testimony, that there's gotta be an alternative site to cover that gap.
Is that what, if all of that's what we're
You know, and if there's technology available or on the horizon or whatever, um. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Of same, okay. Uh, next item. Appointments and resignations, we have none. Uh, first selection's report, I wanted to mention. I don't know if a lot of people knew him, but I think everyone here at this table knew Bobby Gillette, worked for the town for decades, um, passed away uh, Sunday. Uh, he'd been struggling, but I just want to offer our condolences to his friends and family. Bobby was a great guy. I I marvel years ago the old boys' club. There was always a picture of him and Ray Underwood as kids. And I believe they were the same age, and and Bobby was, you know, six foot four and Ray was about five foot. It was just something. Um. So about four months ago, our tax collector came to me and we realized we're gonna have a a bit of an issue. Their busy months are January and July. Her assistant retired after the budget was set. So we knew we were gonna have a a bit of an issue coming into January where she's gonna need help. You know, we posted it for two months, she wasn't getting any feedback. Um, finally made connections with two certified tax collectors or assistants from neighboring municipalities that would cover that gap. Now, what Donna presented to us is budget neutral. Somebody in? I know. Um. So, you know, we we don't have to act on it now, but she's got two individuals that will cover that gap. She had about a two and a half day gap. We know it's crazy in January.
Yeah, I have no problem actually.
Yeah, I mean, I read it before. Lucky to have some additional people off, not retired. Catherine there.
Mm-hmm.
And we're looking to just bring somebody else in.
So what?
Fill in those hours.
Yeah, what this would, what? Correct, we had budgeted for additional for January. We we lost Margaret, she retired.
Yeah.
What this essentially does is it doesn't put another body in the office. It, in other words, it'd only be two people in the office. This this just ensures that there won't be one person during that crunch time.
Well, but if we're in recent happens now. I mean, no.
Um, no, not for, not for that time period, Jay. Um, there's two different assistants, so the gap is
Above and beyond.
Correct, because there's two and a half days, right? There's two and a half days that she can't cover. Okay, um, I don't think we need a motion on that. Uh, school numbers. So we got the numbers from region twelve, like we do every October for enrollment. Um, ours went ours went down a little more than a full percent. Roxbury went down uh, a little more than three quarters of a percent, and Bridgewater went up two percent. Now, yeah, that's, you know, we've been there, we had a year, we had a, had six hundred thousand dollars. This number for us may change, um, because there's I think the number of students impacted could be as much as six uh, being investigated because they don't live in the region. So that are
Prior year, based on what our budget then is. For kids either way, we can really, at a, at a eighteen million dollar budgets, or whatever it is now, it's only now, it's like we can make a big difference for what our share of that number, while we'd like, I personally would like to see more kids living in our town, uh, it does affect what we pay to school.
Mm-hmm.
There is the education money coming safe. That's due now.
I don't follow you.
A whole hundred thousand in that.
I don't know when that comes in, Dean.
Because I worry, I worry that, you know. The windmills are sad, kind of, funded and awarded.
Once we get so little of it. Less than a hundred thousand dollars in savings. Yeah, and support last year.
Um, the last thing I have is the transfer station. Um, the Go Environmental struck bedrock on the second set of wells. Um. I just got this this afternoon a proposal that I I had a passionate phone call with Go Environmental and uh it it's just, anyway, the the other wells are set, the tests will be in two weeks from those, once everything is settled, but I'm going back up with Kevin Smith because we had two old wells. If you guys remember, and he said we could utilize those.
Right.
I said, so why are we trying to, you know? Anyway, so uh, four, yeah. So we'll have that ready. Um, but then there was some information going around. I had a couple of people calling me that were concerned that the transfer station was moving and it it's not. Uh, to me, our goal is clear, is to go through, get these tests done, purchase the land. Not only does that put us out of a nearly thirty thousand dollars a year in lease payments, but it also allows us we had four solar companies bid to put a ground array up there that would generate sixty to eighty thousand in revenue.
Right.
So to move would virtually be millions. You'd have to buy, somebody had mentioned McGat Road. There's no way you can put a transfer station on a property with an emergency services building.
Right.
So in a very densely packed residential neighborhood. So, yeah. Well, and it's, you know, up a cell tower, put up a brown array, so, or you know, that kind of thing. Um, so I I just wanted to make that clear, uh, and that's the end of my report.
Um, just for a minute, that wouldn't be a potential
McGat?
I don't think it would cover the area.
You really want to go down that road?
It's gone on me.
Yeah. But I don't think, so that area, no, but the town spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, making sure those gaps were covered from a radio perspective.
True.
Yeah, on that, oh. Um, sure, no, understood. Uh, selectmen's reports.
Sustainability committee along with the Dunn Library, uh, talking about plastics, they're gonna show a documentary from EBS, I think it is, first. Uh, and then a question and answer session, and uh, hope we're gonna also our goal here is to try to start helping people think about how they can avoid some of those plastics that are terrible. And uh, we have some good ideas for people that you can do at your home. Um, realize it's a big, big issue to deal with, but gotta start somewhere, and so uh, I hope uh, people can join us. Forty-eight, yeah, you're about an hour. Uh, it's gonna be at the library. Be about an hour, uh, documentary, and then uh, some questions and answers, and uh, some of the folks on the committee talking about alternatives they are gonna join us.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, old business, I would make a motion, uh, as follows. The voters and the electors of the town of Washington are hereby warned that a special town meeting will be held on Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M at Bryan Memorial Town Hall, Washington Depot, Connecticut, to consider and act upon the following. To approve the discontinuance of Mount Tom Road from fifty-five Mount Tom Road to sixty-seven Upper Mount Tom Road. To approve the discontinuance of Upper Mount Tom Road from sixty-seven Upper Mount Tom Road to two thirty Romford Road. Three, to amend the ordinance tax abatement for volunteer firing ambulance personnel. Second, so, I mean, the 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 road discontinuances, we've been over the 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 abatement on the tax, or the ordinance on the tax abatement. So, the the meat of it is that it includes that the what's added is the list shall be signed dated as certified as true and accurate by each chief before it is submitted. The first selectman shall report receipt of the list to the board of selectmen and transmit it to the assessor and tax collector. Neither the assessor nor the collector may add or delete an individual. So it's essentially to cut down confusion as to who's qualified, you know, it's fairly stringent.
But is that from the state, or is that what our folks are asking?
That's what our folks are asking us to do. No, no, as a matter of fact, the the one change, the prior change we made to it added volunteers to be eligible that don't live in Washington, that qualify under serving our firing EMS. Correct me, and every time they change it, we we go with the maximum.
One of the things we've been looking at, some of the old ones that we change all the time because the amount of fines we could do, or the change, state change, what we can give a tax, and so we're trying to look to change those to just say that we will comply with the state statute and the board of selectmen or whoever the group is, has the authority to set the amount up to that for the state limit, so we don't have to keep changing the ordinance every time the state changes the rules.
Right. We've always allowed every department to decide.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, however we want to do it, but but this way we don't have to change orders every time that happens, anything happens.
It's very frequently, every few years, it seems.
Or whatever.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, any new business? Go to visitors, start here. Anybody? Yes.
Visitor section.
Yeah, you can, any comments or questions? Hi.
So, for you that have for voice concerns about the um emergency services, we try to self-help and cover helping with that. It makes logical sense, but I'm curious if there's any evidence of there being a problem.
We have, we've had isolated episodes of either lost hikers, um, people on Romford Road where there's been issues. It it's not, again, it's not a radio coverage, it's a, it's a phone coverage, so we have had issues.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, we've, we've had issues where people have hiked out, got to an area where they had a signal or could do SOS and then call.
I had something.
Sure.
Would make me personally safer than having a cell tower, would be, I think. Uh, crosswalks, stop signs, at the intersection of three forty-one and two.
We we can, we can lobby the state to do that. I wouldn't walk across that road if there was a chest full of cash on the other side. I get it, but there's there's certain, there's certain things that, you know, I had a resident once tell me he almost got killed multiple times on Wecum Road, walking the dog. I said, put the dog in a car and come down to the riverwalk. Well, I don't know why I would keep risking my life. That that's a terrible, that's probably the worst place, and I think if you get hit by a car there, it's not gonna be a bump. It's, they're they're doing fifty miles an hour.
Yeah, but the what you're maybe do stuff, we put up stop signs, we put up speed, you know, we've done stuff, but we don't have to
And and I can
Control, no, and even when, I mean, we have, we do lobby to ask them for stuff. Sometimes they listen, and sometimes it's like, who the hell are you people calling us? So.
It's fifty fifty. We can ask them to do a study of that and put in a crosswalk, and they might. Um, like I said, we win half, we lose half, but I'm happy to do that.
One last thing, sorry, the property and question are, I'm sure on that corner that made a complete blind spot when you're turning left on three forty-one, I've been asking, so we'll sweep them down for years. There's, they asked you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good, Brian?
I don't know if it's possible, but uh for those who don't know me, I'm Brian Hakeby, I'm the question of the balloon test that they ran, I had watched the video on the last visual assessment that they had done, and it appears that most of that visual system I blew. Um, I'd be surprised if they don't go up on the, out top, state park tower this time, and also with Dr. Cass's conservative adjacent to this. We're more than eighty thousand people in here into our coverage by right now, we own, basically, we can go Lake Lorimer to have it no good, hard, and not step off of our I find it hard to believe that uh, it would impact some of the visual
Mm-hmm.
enjoyment and experience that visitors get
Yeah.
when we preserve. So if they would run a balloon test and let us know, and have enough people who preserve, and so the way he raised their lookout to see if it's it's visual, five years ago, and can have a proposal for a cell tower, it would have been visual from Lorimer Drive.
Yeah.
And so we had a quick test
Yeah.
I don't know if this still feasible with paying on another balloon test, or what kind of question you want to be able to
I I don't disagree, Brian, and I I, is Steve Brock gonna submit testimony, I hope? Good, um, one of the things that
Provide the data that we're looking.
Yeah, they, one of the things that pushed me over the edge was or helped get me there was they were very uncooperative about a second broader meeting. The the cell phone people, so I said, well, you're not leaving us a lot of options here. We're looking for information, and we're not getting a lot of it, so, um. Uh, yeah, I got a call from the attorney two days after. Yeah. Yep. Um. Anyone else here? If it if it doesn't have, we're moving forward on this, so let, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on cell towers, but the town's intervening. We voted to do that.
Wait, yeah, I
Go ahead, come on, sure.
You know, by intervening, you guys are at the table, and you're, you know, and and maybe not influence the decisions when it goes to the sighting council, but you have a seat at the table, and you can kind of direct or the town can provide her input, so you're doing the right thing by intervening. Um, and then I was gonna ask about a proper town meeting, not one on Zoom where we were under the impression that was a representative, not an entire team, but a proper town meeting, and you're saying that you get, you have, you have an update there for us.
They won't come out.
They what?
They will not come out.
Do we need them? Don't we need a proper town meeting?
Town meeting, I'm not but to do what, Patsy?
Totally, but that there are many, many steps to take in one of these people, where you're saving lives.
No, no, I understand, and the town's intervening, but I'm trying to get it, I'm trying to understand why. No. No, all, the 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 sole authority with placements of these lies with the sighting council. The options open to the town and individuals in the town is to testify and be, have intervenor status. An informational meeting, which they and we requested, and they refused. They, we we have no legal mechanism to force them to come here. Well, if we didn't have them, Patsy, how, if we were having an informational meeting on the need for this cell tower, right, and we didn't have the cell tower company represented, I mean, we'd be preaching to the choir, because we're all on the same page. We don't want it there.
How do these voices get heard by the sighting?
Submit testimony. Individual residents are allowed to submit testimony. And individuals can can apply for intervenor status. It doesn't have to be just the town, the Yeah, I will, and I'll tell you, I went on the site today and I clicked on the link for the application to be an intervenor. It's broken. It it directs you to a page that simply says, this is no longer, right? So my next thing is a phone call first thing in the morning to the E P to say you needed to get us that status, and I'll put that out. When we have those applications, we'll put it up on the website that people can fill out and apply. We agree, Patsy.
Or anything pathetic to have the earth in the shaking. It's also a big deal. It's really not, honestly. In Europe, they have much more respect for it in a great place.
Yeah.
And when you're having to leave, and and I do think the presence of the school there should be just over fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
If you just move the jam, they've just got a lot of land.
No, that's that's our take, or that's our position, Patsy, and is gonna be through the the hearing in December, and I'll put all that information on the website along with the form to become, to apply to be an intervener. It it is, it's a, it's a, I believe it's a virtual meeting. It's public, anybody can attend, and anybody can submit testimony. Being, if you're, if you're granted intervenor status, you have, or you're representative, the right to verbally address the sighting council and provide testimony. Yeah. We'll have it all on the website, as soon as we get a fixed link. Absolutely.
And you can also do written testimony. Also submit testimony for
So you don't have to be an intervenor to submit written testimony. And, go ahead.
Like to make another comment about me, we agree that but with our petition and invitation is alternate and alternate solution, like repeaters, alternate technology. Don't, cell tower may not necessarily be the right solution uh, to provide seamless service or in-vehicle
To provide seamless service or in-vehicle coverage along two oh two dead zones. Repeaters have shown that they can also solve that issue. That's nothing, that's that's, that hasn't been, um, disputed or or provided as an alternative by Tower LLC.
Yeah, and that's all, and that's all information that can be submitted in testimony, is is alternatives, Ahmad.
Clearly Tower doesn't want to do that.
No, this is the the path of least resistance. Their their claim was. Mm-hmm, the attorney, yeah.
Uh, he said, we didn't have, so we we are being stonewalled against the beginning with the problem. In the same, and you know, but I just wanted to know after that. With the same landowner, who is trying again to have the same kind of power on his thirty, uh, you know, uh. So this is very frustrating for us because we got the information very late. So that they've just been telling us, oh, it's December fourth, December fourth, there's almost pretty much nothing for us.
If someone needs to be presented to them and that's fine, if we doesn't Jim worked that, they were, they were about their reading of the master. Or how they, how they basically said that they had talked about sites with that, they said, no, they didn't.
Learn about the, that, you know, when, uh, Mr. Prince said, we were gonna have that meeting with the tech technician.
And Tower, uh, the tower company, yeah. Yeah.
Horizon, the lawyer, everyone, these guys should have actually showed up here for town meeting and information. But again, we were inside here and we listened to what they had to say and that was, that's pretty much it.
Look, wait, wait, I I don't want to be, we're all on the same page, we're all pulling in the same direction, there's no need to to do any, last one. Understood, and I think what I would recommend is we get together, myself and the interested neighbors. We come in here, we sit down and we start getting testimony ready for the town, from the town's perspective, from the neighbor's perspective. Okay, and we'll do that, um, Ahmad, you, if you don't mind, you seem to be point, you and I have communicated back and forth, I'll reach out to you Monday. And we'll all get together and and start the ball rolling. Thank you. Right here, Mano, M A and then, oh. I see online, Blake, I'm gonna let you go first, but please, no cell towers. You gotta unmute.
I'm not sure I know anything but cell towers, Jim.
Well, Blake, I will tell you this, we'd love to have you sit down with us, uh, because of your knowledge and and help us to craft a testimony.
Yeah, I I would love to, um, because I don't want to see anybody set their hair on fire or go go over any cliffs when it comes to this. I just wanted to say that there's a little bit of misinformation about what what you can and can't do with the siding council. Um, they're an evidentiary proceeding, they're they're a legal proceeding. When you intervene, and I'm so glad to hear that the town is going to do that, when you intervene, really what it's doing is just saving yourselves a place at the table. In case you want to present, um, real testimony and real expertise that is challenging the application. And not everybody can be an intervenor, Jim, the thing is, is that you have to have a just cause. The towns are automatically qualified to be interveners, so are budding property owners, so are people within within view sheds. Um, it can't, if actual interveners have to have a stake in the proceedings and the siding council has to recognize that. What, and they have, they have two different, um, uh, uh, hearing processes that happen. The intervener and the interveners and the legal, uh, uh, effort happens in the afternoon. And then citizens get to comment in the evening, but that's not an intervenor status. And what happens is that citizens can, uh, say what they want for three minutes and they can also, uh, submit, uh, written, um. It's not really testimony, it's really written comments to the siding council, and I think there's like thirty or sixty days to do that after the, after the hearing closes. But the 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 thing with the siding council is that, um, they don't want people just sort of going on and on and on about how they don't want the tower. They, it it really is a legal proceeding, they want, they want evidence, they want things like the environmental report that found a vernal pool there that challenges the application. Um, for alternative sites, they want things like, um, alternative R F engineering that can show. That there are alternative ways to fill in that corridor so that you don't have a dead spot there. Also, when the town intervenes, um, you can then present, uh, evidence having to do with your first choices. Even though they're advisory to the siding council, you can present first choices, for instance, for setbacks from the school. Um, you have, uh, really good cell tower regulations and I was, I was a little responsible for 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 a lot of what what you have on the books there. Going back many years now, um, I've written cell towers or or regulations for many towns in Connecticut and and across the country. Um, and so what what you can do is have planning and zoning submit a letter. Uh, highlighting all the ways that this application violates your first choices, uh, for, uh, alternative sites. For environmental protection, for setbacks from schools and dwellings, that's the kind of stuff that they're interested in. Also, with that, um, uh, wetlands report that you have, you don't have normal wetlands there. You've got a full-on vernal pool that is quite magnificent and it's visible from the road. That's a whole different kind of ballgame when it comes to wetland control, and Gustafson should have known that. He really should have known that he was not looking at a normal wetlands there. Um, so that's the kind of thing that carries weight with the siding council for alternative sites, they want alternatives. They don't want people just saying, we don't want it here, and so if you target your information to them very strategically. It will carry weight in a very different way, so interveners have better status. Uh, it helps if you have an attorney do that, it helps if you actually present evidence like letters and things like that into the record. And that's really the way to go about, uh, uh, affecting whether a a an application is accepted or not. But in the very least, what you can do is get the siding council to change the application. Because they have the legal ability to require Verizon and and Robinson and Cole to completely change the design. Of what that application says, um, they can, uh, they can move the access road, they can move this, the the tower site. They can do any number of things, uh, short of, they could do better wildlife inventory. Um, they can, uh, that you you can, you can affect how that entire process goes. Uh, but I'm so glad to hear that you're intervening, and I really hope that the school intervenes too, because they've got a very high stake in this, a very high stake. Um, so there there are ways to go about it. I'd be happy to sit down and map out some strategy with you.
I I really appreciate that, thank you, Blake, John?
Yeah, I have, I have a statement and three questions. I am reminded that good things happen when people can sit down and debate issues and, um, and discuss issues. Number one, Jim, you said that the, um, there might, there's the possibility that solar panels would be placed. I'm assuming it's the, uh, part of the landfill that was covered up, the pit that was the open dumping pit. Uh, now it's, uh, sort of abound.
D E E P allows for capped landfills to have a ground solar rate, but you have to own the property, you can't, the solar companies won't do it with a lease.
This was investigated before and I I was under the impression that, uh, there's skepticism because of the methane. Possible methane gas emissions. No, okay. Now, also, uh, there were reports that certain destinations that we haul the trash to. Are not accepting, uh, or I I think that the out-of-state destinations are not accepting, uh, refuse. Is that, um, has that been, um, investigated?
Where'd you hear that, John, what report?
On the radio, I think they said Ohio, certain states were not accepting out-of-state.
We don't go out of state, John, our goes, ours goes to Bristol.
Yeah, but where do they bring it?
They don't, they burn it to energy.
They still burn it in Bristol?
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, speaking of which, okay, so the, um, the single stream container. Is that stuff actually recycled?
Yes.
I've heard varying reports on that.
Who do you get your reports from, John?
People that are skeptical of as to whether or not.
Okay. Yeah, they 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 take it all, John, you muted, they they take it all at, uh, Bristol.
And they recycle it. The plastic from the paper and 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 metal.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? A motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye, thank you, folks, thanks for coming out. Yeah, I'll reach out to Ahmad Monday, and I think what we'll do is we'll get sort of a group email, so then we're all on the same. And we'll come in here, yeah, we'll come in here, whatever's convenient for everybody and we'll start banging out, I think Blake will be a huge help for that.